Okay, welcome to the ordinance committee meeting of December 21st, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely still. And as things are going, it looks like it might be held remotely for a continuation of time. But I just wanted to, we have a couple of things that we need to get done tonight. We need to approve some minutes. We also, I think it would be smart for us to look at setting another, like an organizational meeting, potentially before the January 5th meeting for the new committee members or whoever that shakes out. So that's a piece. Since there's nobody here, I don't think we have to worry about public speak at this moment. But I'm happy to open that up again if we do get some folks that come in. Now, tonight, one of the things that I thought would make sense for us to look at is the vacant storefront ordinance that the EDIC has sent to us. So as soon as, I think probably it makes sense for us to get the minutes out of the way and then we can jump right into that if that sounds okay with you guys.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
Just, just one question. Am I correct in saying, I think that the idea we had last time was that Jeff's gonna show up at 7? Was he planning to? Was that what we decided last time?
I don't remember exactly. Yeah, go ahead, Owen.
Yes, I remember that, but for some reason, was that, what was the purpose of that? Was that before we had the public, the joint public hearing? Was that to discuss the overlay or Groveland maybe?
I think that the idea was that we were gonna talk about Juneteenth. And when he, because he doesn't need to be here for that. And then, but it's cool, we can do it in whatever order we want. I do, yeah.
I was kinda, I was kinda hoping not to go too much over an hour tonight. But if, if he does come, he didn't send me any messages saying that he was planning on being here. And he normally does, but you know, if, if he does come in, I'm happy to maybe just give him an update and see what his thoughts are and then we can go from there.
I think that was for the zoning stuff. And since Groveland, which we also, Mr. Chairman, have to officially remove. Yep. I think, Tom, I think that was for one, either your items or for Groveland, I think. But I don't remember, because I, did he, was he interested in the storefront thing?
I imagine that he probably will be at some point, but it's, I mean, I'll bet, it's also like, we are not, he's not required to be here for that. I just, um, okay, so here's what happened to my recollection. And I also wanna say that I respect and like Salem's idea of not going super late. But I think what we, what we had said last time, and I'm just saying this for, because I brought it up, was that because we've, we've been starting late, we've been starting at 7, like our meetings have been generally pretty short, which has meant that the Juneteenth item has not gotten addressed yet. Like, or we haven't even started talking about it, because usually we talk about some zoning thing for an hour and then it's 8, we're hungry and you, you know, it's like how they say that like judges convict people way worse before lunchtime. Like you just, you know, at some point, you just need to, no, it's true, it's horrifying, but it's true. So, uh, like, you know, so we, so I said, well, why don't we go to this meeting? And then we can figure this out, you know, before, you know, Jeff even gets, we can do the Juneteenth thing before Jeff even gets here and then we can talk about the other thing. That being said, if in the meantime, there's no indication that he's coming and you're feeling that way, I just spent the last two hours assembling a giant couch, so I am very cool with a shorter meeting if we just wanna do a couple of things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, I, I, I do have a recollection of what you're talking about, um, Tom. So I think that that might be something that we can consider. I do know that, what I, you know, really what I'd love to do is after we do the minutes, I'd love to go through and get some, um, like at least an introduction. Um, and, but you know, honestly, Juneteenth, I think is gonna be a, a pretty in and out. So if we spend 15 minutes on that, I think we probably could like get enough of it done that we can kinda move it. So, um, so let's, let's do, um, let's do our minutes. And then I see that Danielle's here and I'm happy to open up public speak. Danielle, if you have something you wanna bring in that's not on the agenda. But other than that, I, I think that we are ready to go here. Okay, so Owen, do we, do you wanna, um, go ahead and move some minutes here?
Yeah, I actually think that I'm, with, with the possibility, I think I missed a few just because I just like overlooked them. I actually think that we might have all of them for the most part. There might be a few scattered ones. And I know for a fact that our beloved clerk, Barbara Bombard, will remind me if there are, but, um,
Yes.
So, uh, I'm just gonna make a motion. I sent over the 11:16 and 11:30 minutes. So I'd like to make a motion to accept both of those.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Council Peak.
Hi.
Counselor Zaret.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so we can move those right through. And thanks for doing that, Owen, I appreciate it. And, um, you know, since this is our last meeting of the, of this term, I wanna say thanks to you guys for being on ordinance and doing all the hard work. I think we got some good stuff done, so appreciate it. That being said, uh, hey, Owen, I'm not ready for Juneteenth. Do you have that somewhere where you can pull it up and made you co-host?
Yeah, I have it right here, yeah.
I have all the other stuff ready to go, so maybe if we can do this. And, and do we wanna, um, just for, as you're kinda getting that, do we wanna look to dismiss the seven Groveland without prejudice? Why don't we, why don't we get a motion to that effect while you're getting that stuff up?
I will make a motion to dismiss the seven Groveland rezoning measure without prejudice.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, so we have a motion in a second to release this. And just, you know, as far as discussion goes, uh, you know, the, the property owner had requested that we remove it and they were the ones that requested that we review it. So, um, I think it's pretty easy, it's an easy call here. So I'm gonna go with Counselor Zaret.
Yes.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote yes as well, so that is removed. And, um, I'll make sure that that gets removed at our January 5th meeting from our agenda as well. Okay, so what do you have for us, Owen, anything?
Yeah, yeah, so let me, um, let me get to this. I have two screens, but on, on the, one screen's completely zoomed and the other screen's everything else. So it's really almost the same, it's just having one screen. So, uh, so let me, so really quickly, one is that, um, I think state or federally, Juneteenth is an official holiday. So we had to change the section 2, 2 slash 8 in the ordinance to include it. Um, and there were a couple of things that, that were, here, let me just bring this up really quick for you. This is just the easy part. Okay, can you see this, just the city holidays thing?
Yep.
Okay, so just, this is mostly just some housekeeping and since we had to include Juneteenth in the city holidays, the, I think I accidentally put a half a day before Thanksgiving and the clerk emailed me to indicate that we, the city doesn't have a half a day before Thanksgiving, it is an official holiday. And the rest is already there, including the, the indigenous people's day in lieu of Columbus Day. So that's pretty straightforward unless, like, if there, unless there's questions about that.
No, I'm, I'm happy to, to move that forward.
Okay, and then, um, let me, uh, let me stop my screen share here. So, um, you know, we've had a lot of talk about, I think this is a very important holiday. And we've had a lot of talk about, obviously, oh, really? All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, one sec, sorry, my, my thing froze.
You're very stoic, oh, now you moved, there you go.
Very serious about this. So, um, you know, I think this is a very important holiday with everything that's been going on over the last two years. You know, the murder of George Floyd and just in general, the city being more proactive about recognizing issues around racial justice and reparations for when this country allowed slavery. And I thought it would be important that the council verbally affirm their recognition of, of this holiday. If that makes sense to, did you hear all of that?
Yep, and I agree.
I am. So let me share, so I, I kind of, I, I made a quick resolution, which, do you want me to just kinda go through it line by line? And then we can discuss it, all right?
Sure.
I'm just quickly closing some other applications. Okay. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so what would be the best way, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just kinda read through this and then come back to?
Yeah, let's do a first, let's do a first reading. And if we, if we see something, I, I think that maybe if Tom or I see something that we, that stands out to us, we can just stop and, and take a look at it as we go.
Yeah, and, and as usual, you know, a lot of this, there was already, a lot of this was kind of the same way I cook. You know, I, I, I looked at a number of resolutions and kind of brought together what I thought were kind of the best, the best wording from that and probably, and it's been a while since I did this, but included kinda some of my own special sauce to
Okay.
extend that metaphor. So a resolution of the City Council of East Hampton to recognize Juneteenth as a city holiday, whereas Juneteenth celebrates the end of slavery in the United States and is also known as the Emancipation Day, Juneteenth Independence Day and Black Independence Day. And whereas Abraham Lincoln decreed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, the proclamation declared that all persons held as slaves are and henceforth shall be free. And whereas news of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was withheld in parts of the United States for two and a half years and this freedom was not made known to many enslaved African Americans. Whereas because freedom from slavery in the United States came to enslave black people in different parts of the United States at different times, emancipation celebrations are often called by different names and take place on different dates. Juneteenth recognizes that on June 19th, 1865, the last enslaved people in Galveston, Texas were informed that slavery had been abolished. Uh, and whereas organizations across the world and a number of countries also recognized June 19th as the end of slavery and to celebrate the culture and achievements of African Americans globally. And whereas racial injustice and violence towards African American citizens have resulted in national protests, demonstrations on the unification of voices crying for a need of, for racial, for judicial racial reform. And whereas in July of 2020, Juneteenth was officially recognized as a holiday in the state of Massachusetts. And in June 2021, Juneteenth was officially recognized as a federal holiday. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of East Hampton, Massachusetts on this day that Juneteenth is hereby officially recognized as a holiday in the city of East Hampton. And be it further resolved that the day shall be spent in recognition of the social and cultural significance of the abolition of slavery in the United States and punctuated by the gravity of historical and ongoing racial injustice in our country.
That's, it sounds really good to me.
I have one super nitpicky point, which is that when we're talking informal documents, shouldn't it be the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
It absolutely should, uh, yes, so.
The state of Massachusetts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm gonna save this, I like to, I like to, um, keep the original, where is the original text? And then I'll save this as something else, um, so.
Have you ever used the, uh, in, if you click on the review chat tab, the track changes tool?
Yeah.
Does that same thing?
Yeah, no, I, I know that, I just, th- this way, um, yes, yeah.
Not trying to be tech support, sorry.
No, 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 I, I know, I know it does.
Tom, I can't get my tablet to turn on.
No, I, I like to use this as, um, yeah, let me, yeah, yes, that's a, I, yes. It's serious, yes, I do.
Okay, whatever, it's none of my business.
Yeah, I wanted to be able to, this way to show, like, to be able to print out and maybe, can you print out track changes? Okay, then nevermind.
So, but I never print anything, so I.
Right, that's why I did it this way, so that way, like, if I printed it for, to show up the changes we made.
Yeah.
But maybe I'm wrong, that, it might, I might be creating a lot of extra work.
Well, so here, here's the thing, I mean, as it stands right now, I feel like it says a lot of the things that it should say. And I, I, I feel like it's in a pretty good place. I mean, Tom's catch is, is good. But as far as content, I feel like it's, it's pretty solid.
Right, I mean, that was my only thing and it's very nitpicky, so.
Yeah.
I think this makes a lot of sense. It's straightforward. I don't disagree with anything that's said in it. So, and I think that it, you know, I, I, I understand the, the importance of it, so.
Yep.
I'm, I'm fine then, forward on this.
Great, so, Owen, if you feel comfortable with that, then, you know, I, I think that we could, um, you know, pending this one little change, this is something that we could move out of committee.
Yeah, good, yeah, I'm sorry it took so long, I just didn't wanna, you know, we have to do some other bigger things. I mean, I know that it's a federal holiday, but I think because of a lot of discussions that are being had at the city level, it's unfortunately, there's cities out there that are probably potentially not recognized in this holiday. So, um, okay, yeah, then, uh, do I need to make a motion or?
Yeah, let's, let's get a motion on table and, and move this out.
Okay, great, um, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes to the, sorry. The general ordinances of these Tantin, the section 2 dash 8, as described previously, include Juneteenth and to eliminate half day before Thanksgiving and to accept the Juneteenth resolution as, as, as previously read in this committee meeting, with the exception of correctly changing the, as it stated, the state of Massachusetts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to change the aforementioned section of ordinances and the, move the resolution for Juneteenth to the full city council. Any further discussion? Okay, Council Peak.
Hi.
Counselor is there?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so this is another one that we'll get to bring forward in the new year. So that's great, and I like the, the, we're able to keep these things moving. So, let's, uh, let me share my screen and, um, let's jump into, uh, hold on, let me just make sure I get, have it up here. Okay, so let's jump into the vacant storefront ordinance. So I'm hoping you guys can see my screen here. And so just as a background, which I know you guys know, but I just wanna just make sure that it's on the record that, um, this was something that was brought to us by the EDIC. And it was an idea that they had after seeing some ordinances in other communities that have a vacant storefront bylaw or ordinance. Um, and so this piece right here is something that they sent to us, which is from the town of Arlington, which basically tells what they did and, and why they did it. So in 2015, they had 17 vacant commercial properties. Um, and some of them had, had been vacant for quite a long time. Um, and they felt, and this is actually, if you look at the information from other communities, this is a pretty, a pretty universal concern for a lot of communities around the protecting the welfare and economic vitality of the downtown area. Some places focus more on the, like, the health and safety issues, like the blight issues, because some buildings can get pretty rundown and, and be unsafe. Um, and might have squatters and, and things like that. You know, I think for us in East Hampton, you know, safeguarding against economic property blight is probably, you know, one of the more important pieces as we've kind of come into this economic, you know, high point for the city. And to maintain sustain the kind of vitality that our, our downtown areas have experienced in the last 15 years, which for the city of East Hampton is not a, something that, um, you know, has always been. You know, we've struggled, uh, I mean, just 20 years ago, a Saturday night downtown, you would struggle to find people. You know, and now, any night of the week, it's, it's thriving, right? So that's kind of one of the things that, um, the EDIC wanted to protect. Um, and so they've, and, and the, this, in Arlington, they felt like these empty storefronts frustrate local planning efforts. They potentially degrade the vitality and the value of, um, the other surrounding properties, that there could be risks of vandalism and like people entering. Um, and those could potentially be a hazard as well. Um, and so, you know, this, uh, bylaw was really intended to promote public welfare and economic health. And that's kinda what the EDIC used to shape their ordinance. So what Arlington did was if a property was vacant for 90 days, then there would be a $400 annual registration fee per vacant storefront. Um, and so there was a little bit of teeth, they'd have to register their vacant storefront with the city. And if the property owner could demonstrate financial hardship or choose to display art, then they could get around that $400 fee. Uh, and, and basically, it also requires the property owners to, you know, say how they're trying to fill and maintain the property. So there's some reporting requirement, which I think, um, in the sample ordinance, isn't really spelled out that much, but I think it's something to, for us to, to put on our radar. And then, you know, when this all came together, you know, it was, uh, support groups that were, um, helping the downtown district and town staffs, I imagine the planning department helped. And, but, but here's the piece that I wanted to kinda put out, because I think this is important. So they went in one year since they put this bylaw in, um, from 17 vacant storefronts to five. And so they felt like there was a lot more awareness around the, the properties that were vacant after this. And it helped them develop a relationship with the commercial properties. You know, if you look at Cambridge, they have different, some different approaches, they also have a lot more resources. But, you know, Cambridge has like a, a whole, like a liaison to work with vacant commercial property owners to try to see what they can do to fill, educating them about property values, educating them about rent and how to market. And, um, they even have websites where you can, you know, you post vacant properties and then people, um, post on the website like what their ideas are to put things in that space. And people vote on it, um, which can attract, um, you know, entrepreneurs and things like that. So this is, uh, some of the art installations that they had in Arlington. Um, and they felt like that piece was a little bit difficult, difficult to implement. And they felt like these window murals were better than stuff that's inside. And they still have vacant storefronts, so, um, you know, it didn't cure the problem. But, you know, they felt like, um, this work, I mean, I, I think that the overall feeling was that this was something that worked for them, um, in their community. Uh, and so I think it's worth us discussing, um, you know, as far as like where we're at, you know, I, I'm hoping you guys can see, can you guys see the sample ordinance here that the EDIC sent to us? Okay, um, I, I, what I'll do is I'll make this a little bit bigger, so we can think that, is that better?
Yeah.
Um, so what I was thinking, um, is after I kinda opened it up for you guys to have some initial thoughts, maybe we can just kinda go through this and see what parts of it we think, um, you know, work or go through this and let it sit, let it, you know, kind of marinate with us and then come back to the table with ideas. Now, if, if, you know, if, if we have a change of the guard, you know, I think that it's still gonna be important to make sure that, you know, this is something that all city councils can be involved in. So, you know, I, I think that as we kind of move through this, I think it's gonna be important for the three of us to continue to have input on this, um, as we move forward, because, you know, we have a little bit of a background on it. But, um, what do you guys think so far?
Um, I like it, I, I mean, I, I generally think that this is like a real problem that, I mean, if you just look at how much downtown real estate is currently being unused, it's, some of it, I feel is, is, I mean, some of it's more concerning than others. Where I'm really the most concerned is in like properties that are just like altogether abandoned. You know, that are like, properties that like, you know, like if you've got a, if you've got a, a building with four storefronts and one of them's empty, I, okay, but like,
Right.
some of these, some of these are, there, there is like a real concern I have about like some, you know, like the Hurry and Scurry Building, for example, and just like that, that's just prime real estate. It's ridiculous that that's just like not being used for anything. And so I think that there is, um, like, I, I like this as an idea. I would be definitely interested in tracking how effective it ultimately is, because my thought is that redeveloping a lot of these properties, especially the blighted ones, is such a heavy lift that I, I really, I kinda wonder how much like, say, $400, like what teeth that is actually going to be in getting somebody to undergo what ultimately is gonna be a, you know, six-figure, seven-figure redevelopment effort. But maybe, maybe it just, you know, maybe, maybe there's something psychological about being like, well, okay. And again, a lot of these people are still currently paying property taxes on properties. They're getting no income from what you'd think would be enough of an incentive, but.
Right.
I mean, that, that I guess is my only, like, I'm like, I, I like this in principle, I'm, it sounds like in Arlington, it, it, it sorta worked, I mean, it, it works to some extent. And I think that that is, is promising, I, I just, my, my, that is my only thing, it's just that, like, it, it seems like these people are already incurring a lot of like, ju- just paying taxes on something that's not generating any income for them. So I wonder how much like a $400 or even like a thousand dollar bump is really gonna change their math on that.
Right, and, and I think that, that's one of the things that we can discuss is the, the economics of this. You know, cause in the draft ordinance, what you'll see is it's not 400, they put a 100. You know, so if that was a hundred dollars a month, maybe, you know, like, I don't know, but, uh, yeah, no, and I, I agree. And I think that if we look at, you know, just, just take Main Street, for example. We, on one side of Galaxy, we have Moriarty and Moriarty Building that has been vacant for at least 15 years, right?
Yeah.
Um, on the other side, we have the Bank of America, which is vacant, right? On the cross street, we have Chertain Tattoo vacant, um, even though, I guess you could argue that there's kind of an art display in the window. But, you know, where Goat Peak Strings was is vacant, where Jenny's Haircuts is vacant, Coco's now vacant. You know, so just like in that one little square, we have, you know, um, uh, it's, I would say, it might not be a majority of, of the storefronts are empty, but it's pretty, you know, it's pretty even, I guess, it's pretty close. So, Owen, do you have any thoughts on this?
I have a bunch of thoughts. First, um, I, I agree with everything that Tom said. I'm gonna channel Jeff Bag for a second, especially since he's not here, um, and say, you know, I, I really like where you're going with this. We have to remember that this is East Hampton, it's not Arlington or Cambridge. And so we have to really look at this through an East Hampton lens. It's not a very good Jeff Bag imitation, but it's, 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 you know, very reminiscent of, of Flatter Bag. No, I think this is a great idea, I think especially as, as Tom pointed out, you know, when we start, when this starts kind of stretching towards the, uh, blight, you know, there's, there's that building in town that he mentioned, that's, that's been a big problem. And then, um, you know, there, there's the, that other building near Big E is, you know, Moriarty, Moriarty. The Moriarty Moriarty and Moriarty, um, you know, that's concerning. And then you just kind of get into more like things like the Goat Peak Strings storefront, like you mentioned, and Shark Tank Tattoo and things like that where. Yeah, like we we'd like to see those occupied. Um, I, um, you know, the first thing that that that. Where I had kind of a more of a um, uh, visceral reaction to this is just realizing that right now it's. It's a hard time to kind of gauge empty storefronts because of the pandemic. And I would imagine that businesses that are open are having a hard time, not to mention, you know, storefronts that are empty attracting businesses. So I think it's a good time to start the conversation, but I feel like we have to be sensitive to, you know, the potential for the fact that there's that. That for ma- many property owners, uh, they're they're potentially, and it's hard to attract people to open businesses right now, at least. That would be my assumption. Maybe I'm wrong. Um, I'm just going to throw a few thoughts, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, so one thing that, you know, you cited in some of the slides from Arlington was the numbers, the number of of vacant storefronts. And I think it's, it it would be important for us to kind of know where we're starting from with with our ordinance. And also, what storefronts are we talking about? So obviously, I think downtown makes sense, you know, Cottage Union Main. But then you start getting into like, are the mills part of this too, like our empty? Our empty retail space or commercial space in the mills, do those count and how do they count? You know, what's the buy-in from property of property owners, or have we talked to any of them to kind of get their feedback? What is the average duration of an empty storefront in East Hampton? You know, the fee to register, I don't think I'm particularly crazy about. I think, but I definitely agree with, you know, some form of, you know, fines. I don't know if a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a day feels excessive to me, but I also do agree with what Counselor Peak said that. You know, when when property owners are kind of staring down thousands of dollars of losses and or potential renovations, like. A couple hundred dollars doesn't necessarily incentivize them to do much else. I love the idea potentially of using this as a way to, you know, to um feature art. Um, I also like the idea of somehow, you know, at the end of the day, this should be business friendly in the sense that we want business to come here. We want to support property owners. We want to make, we want them to be supported if they have an empty storefront to get people in here. It's not, shouldn't feel um like it's it's punitive. It should feel, it should feel like we're there next to them. I think there might need to be some work on the city side to kind of create like a page, you know, for this to to, so people could go and look what storefronts are empty. That's just kind of my, you know, my my kind of like trail of consciousness slash some of the things I I jotted down.
I think that's, I think that's really good. And I will say this, I will say that, you know, this potential by this potential ordinance i- is one tool. I think that we should look to, um, you know, potentially deliver as part of a a kit. You know, because I think there's multiple, there's multiple approaches that we can take to this. And, you know, I think that this is why it's going to be important for us eventually to have Planner Bag involved in this, because, you know, there is a state. You know, a a state organization that supports vacant storefronts in downtown business districts. Um, and so that, one of the things that that requires is having an overlay, a vacant business overlay district. Um, and then that, what that does is it opens up um the opportunity for tapping into state funds that can then support the business owners. Um, that want to, you know, make their properties more attractive, to do upgrades, to, you know, so make them more moving ready. I think these, that is kind of the carrot, right? And and I think that part's going to be very important for us to explore. And this part's more of like, uh, what comes after the carrot? You know, this is the more of the stick. And but I think that having multiple um incentives or, you know, uh. You know, punitive things is important, because, I mean, there's a bunch of reasons why people leave their storefronts open. Not all of them are, you know, because of hardship or because of, you know, um, you know, inability to rent those. O- oftentimes, it's a, it's a, it's a tax write-off, you know, and and it's it's in their portfolio, it makes them, you know, it's an incentive. So I'll I'll stop talking there and I'll put, let Tom go ahead and and talk. Go ahead, Tom.
So, um, this is, uh, this is a problem. Some of the people, like in the world of economics, I don't think we're going to look into this, but this is, this is why some economists uh talk about. Like property taxes being just based on the value of the land and not the value of the structures on it is because, you know, that that would. It would basically, you know, well, anyway, that's a conversation for another day, but sort of like a, that is a thing that a lot of economists feel strongly about. But uh, I think that one thing that uh Counselor Zaret was saying that I I feel is kind of important. Like, like, I feel like it's maybe a good thing for us to talk about is like. Okay, so like, we're right now in a massive global public health crisis with huge economic implications, right? And you have a lot of restaurants that were not able to make it. You have a lot of spaces that are maybe specked out for restaurants, but like, like the Galaxy space, right? Like, realistically, like, I I have to imagine, given like the sort of global attention that Galaxy got, that that. Kitchen is sweet. And I have a feeling that the folks who are there want, like whoever the the landlord is for that that building probably wants to put another restaurant in next. And I have a feeling that um there's just not a lot of people wanting to open restaurants right now. So, um, like, okay, that's that's one thing. We're sort of like, I I really feel like macroeconomic factors play a big part here. I I would maybe even like, like, I don't know, I could, I could help with this. I don't have the exact language here, but maybe something saying that the city council. Can suspend this at time, in ti- in times where there's like massive macroeconomic distress.
Yeah.
And like, it's because you're right, there are some landlords out there in the world and probably in East Hampton, just, you know, statistically. Who, what they, like, what they have going is that, you know, they pay the property taxes on this, but it's basically a write-off. They have a piece of developable land that could be housing, you know, it could be commercial space, it could be all sorts of stuff, and instead it's falling apart. And providing, like, causing a public health problem and like actually depr- depriving the city of of tax revenue. Because that could be like a really cool parcel with a lot of value on it, and instead it's a rotting, falling apart building, right? So like, that to me is a thing where I I would really actually want to, like. I I'm like, I don't want to get moralistic here, but what I I I do think is that, like, for those people. There might be economic reasons why that actually makes sense for them and a sort of disincentive that makes that no longer make sense to them. And makes it like, okay, if you're not going to do anything with this parcel, you should probably sell it. Is probably a thing that would be good for the city. And I I I do like that idea. I, so yeah, maybe, and sorry, I'm kind of brainstorming here. I I feel like, you know, we're giving people a certain amount of time, right, to fill one of these. What what's the, what's the, what's the window?
So, yep, so uh, so this would be the um ninety days after a unit or any portion of property becomes vacant as defined here. And owners must register the vacancy within the city on its website. All regulations must state the owner's name, all, you know, et cetera. Uh, and so that would be ninety days, and I feel like the fine wouldn't be. Uh, so the annual registration on this, it would be a hundred dollars. Um, and they, there's a way to get waivers for that. There's a whole process of different, you know, like you could have a financial hardship or. Whatever, and there's, there there would be a thirty-day review for that. So, yeah, ninety days is is the the number. But I do like your idea. I do like your idea about having a way to, I mean, and and really a way to suspend this is to give the enforcement agent. The flexibility to say during economic downturns, this can be, you know, this does not.
Yeah, we, we don't have to vest that power in us, although.
Yeah.
I sort of like the idea of that, but um, but I, you know, it it could be whatever, but I having somebody somewhere that can say, oh, I'm sorry, Owen's.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Owen.
All good. A couple thoughts there. Um, what you, one thing is we probably have to bring in the. Whoever we're recommending as the enforcement agents in one of the uh, um, in one of these sections. And there's a couple typos in this draft, but that's not a big deal. Suspiciously missing part C in section five, and I'm very curious to know what that is. But, uh, you know, it's like building inspector, fire chief, health inspector, like, one thing that always comes up when we have these discussions is. We'll have you talk to those people, so we should definitely get them, you know, on board or 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 get their their buy-in. I I think for East Hampton, and and I might be totally wrong, because I don't necessarily really have my finger on the pulse of the economic vitality. Of the city right now, but ninety days sounds like not a really long time for our city. That's just, you know, and I think one of the drafts you sent over, um, Mr. Chairman, it had six months, and it feels, that feels a little better to me. But ninety is a really short period of time, um, especially in this. And then I guess the the other question is. I guess my question just would be, you know, just to get ahead of it, is what would it, what would that go towards and what would it go towards? Who would that go to? And what would that do? Um, would it pay for basically kind of some of the behind-the-scenes administrative stuff around this? Like if, for instance, there's a website and a listing, like, is it paying for the hours to 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 list this and put it on a website somewhere? Like, I just want to be able to justify why we're charging that fee too.
No, I agree with that. I think that having this money either go back into the enforcement agencies that are going to have to implement it. Or, I mean, honestly, because I, you know, I'm not necessarily a huge fan of the of the stick approach, really. Because I would love to see, you know, what I'd love to see is I'd love to see more of an incentive-based approach where we can, you know, look to help. Property owners improve their properties to make them more attractive. And, you know, that again could be potentially another piece that the money could be used for is going to a fund. That could, you know, um, assist property owners in doing renovations, like a matching fund or something like that. That maybe get some state funds to, you know, or whatever. I mean, there could, there could be a lot of different ways that we could go about this. I mean, for me, I think at this point in the process, you know, identifying really what are our main goals for vacant properties in the city? Like, what do, what do we want to see? What do we not want to see as it relates to these? And and I can probably say, like, we we don't want to end up in the situation Northampton's in with, you know, like, uh. Concentrated property ownership that is, you know, lan- you know, languishing, I guess. Uh, and and which is causing probably distress to the overall economy of the downtown region. That's what we don't want, right? So, um, but I think, I think we're off to a pretty good start. You know, I I think that as we kind of move forward here, um, probably what we can do is we can each digest these pieces. And come up with ideas that could potentially be, you know, additions to the ordinance, modifications to it. But also kind of um things that might be in conjunction with it, that we can kind of work with the planner with to see. Maybe where does a fund get set up for this money? Um, you know, how how does that work? And are there state programs like the TIF program, you know, that could help us um make this more doable for the property owners? That are doing nothing with their buildings right now. But I, you know, I do agree with the the fact we're in a pandemic, and that makes things a little bit more complicated. So, but this is a good time for us to to take a look at this, you know? And hopefully, uh, we can have this ready for when we start pulling out of the pandemic and we can, you know, uh, be setting off with a really strong footing. So, I mean, I I don't know if you guys want to go too much further and dig too much deeper. I feel like we've gotten a pretty good start. And we could probably just, you know, take this for homework, but um, what do you guys think?
Can I float one idea?
Sure.
And then, yeah, I I do kind of want to just dig into this, but uh. I think that in cases where a business owner, or sorry, like a a property owner is actually renovating a space. That maybe that shouldn't be counted as vacant.
So I think that should be exempt.
Yeah, because like if if someone's like, oh, I, my tenant left and I'm going to put in brand-new floors and a new HVAC system. And that's going to take six months, because it's hard to schedule contractors right now. Then like, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's perfectly fine. I I mean, really, like, the the, for me, I mean, and. We can talk about this, like, for me, the concern that I have is about properties that have been vacant for fifteen years, right? Where it's like, I just, what, what carrot is there anywhere? That the Commonwealth or the city has the ability to provide that we're not providing, that's going to change somebody's mind. On a property that's been vacant for a decade, right? It's one thing if, oh, well, I want to make this a, you know, a restaurant. It's taking forever to get all the permanent, that that's fine with me. But what what like, you know, if you've got a a building with, you know, five commercial storefronts and four of them are active. And one of them, you're just having trouble finding the right tenant for, like, I'm very all for being flexible with that person. I do think that there are some prime parcels in our city which are being completely neglected. And I think they're being neglected because it makes economic sense right now to neglect them. And I think the only way you get around that is with a stick that's big enough that it suddenly no longer makes sense to not do anything. Like, I I just don't think these people are like, like, forgot they have a property, right? Like, they they they, it makes, it currently, this is, in their mind, the most sensible thing they can do is nothing. So I I don't, I don't, I I just don't see what incentive we possibly have the power to provide to fix that, but I know I've been going for a while.
But, well, you know, and I think probably at that point, the incentive would be, um, if there's a new owner, incentives to help that new owner. You know, make that property, put that property back together. I think, you know, like that, that's where I, that's where I would think the carrot would lie, probably not with the person who's been holding on to it, but maybe with someone new who wants to do something. Uh, Owen.
Yeah, I completely agree. Uh, Counselor Peak makes an exceptionally salient point that we, it's what's very easily to put into the uh. The definition of vacant building that, you know, some wording that indicates that it's not being actively renovated or something of that sort. Um, and then actually, within the the draft ordinance, it 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 stipulates that it's um, these buildings are within the downtown business district, which I would agree with. It's kind of, um, it that this is more relevant, kind of the. The uh, when the the aesthetics of the city, you know, are made better by occupied visible storefronts. Not that we don't want to encourage occupation of some of the the points I brought up earlier about like spaces in the mill buildings. And that's something to talk about, but I think it makes sense that just for now, talk about downtown business. And uh, you know, things I I love about this, just in general, are just creating. You know, some economic equity across property owners that, here's the things, if your building's going to be vacant, like, here are the things you have to do. And and pretty much all of them, for the most part, minus the fees are free, like, you need to put a sign in your window that tells people how to contact the landlord. Like, you should, you know, use the um, the vacancy of the building while it's vacant for the betterment of the city, i.e. some sort of um art project. And it gets kind of everyone on the same page and puts everyone on equal footing, whether you have, you know, a tiny hundred-square-foot space on Main Street. Or you own a standalone building somewhere else. So I I like that stuff. You know, I I think it's business, if we can slip, if we can lean towards this being is, you know, more from the approach of being business-friendly, um, like I said before. You know, and and but with with a mind on kind of like, making sure that we're we're aggressively wagging our finger or or using the stick, as you put it. Counselor Derby, you know, for some of these larger property owners that seem the, you know, to let buildings lay vacant for years, like, that's just. It's inexcusable, especially with, you know, the housing shortage and things like that. And so if there's like, if there's a way to frankly, put some some stuff in here about blight, I think that's also some nice, you know, frosting on the cake.
Yeah, and I think I think blight is, you know, is a, has a really. Yeah. And I think, I think blight is, you know, is a, has a really tight connection to the health and safety piece. You know, because as things start to fall apart, then, you know, that is going to potentially, you know, be a, a risk for neighboring properties. So, um, yeah, so I, I think, um, here's what I'm writing down and some things that I'm going to like, look to put in here as we kind of move forward. Creating a difference between a, a long-term vacant property and a vacant property that is a shorter term. Like Tom mentioned, um, having an exception for a vacant property that's being renovated, or at least accounting for that. Looking to make this not just not, you know, uh, business friendly in a way that's going to encourage more businesses to want to fill these vacant properties. And, and, and I think part of that is going to be an education piece for the landowners, which could be city side, you know, like a, a clearinghouse, like a website that's on the city website that has, you know, that anybody can access from anywhere in the country and say, hey, these are the properties that are available. Here's how you get in touch with the people to rent them, you know? And then addressing some blight issues that could potentially, um, you know, mitigate some of the health and safety concerns that are out there. So that's what I have so far. Am I missing anything? Yeah, Counselor Zaret.
Just one thought, although they're not really a city department, but it would be interesting to, to engage the Chamber of Commerce on this. To, we can't require them to do anything, but it'd be nice either, A, pull them in on, on the conversation at one of the meetings. Or, you know, if we encourage them to participate in listing the properties or somehow participating in the process. I don't, I don't know how we can do that, but that's kind of one of the obvious. We don't, because I don't think we really have an, an office in the city that's, that's responsible for economic development. I guess planning sort of.
Planning, yeah.
Yeah, but the chamber might be an interesting group to at least talk to. They might have some ideas here.
And so that, that's actually a good segue because as far as players, stakeholders, so chamber, planning department. And, uh, the building inspector, building commissioner.
Obviously the EDIC since.
EDIC since they brought it to us. EDIC, uh, fire chief, police chief.
I don't know if Blueprint East Hampton has any role here, but in terms of their, you know, small business support initiative.
That maybe is where we bring in the mayor. Who can connect us with things like that. So, um, those, and, uh, so that's, that's going to be my list of people that I'm going to try to bring into the fold as we kind of move forward on this. Tom.
So two quick things. I know we're wrapping up. One thing is, uh, when we talk about this in terms of like business friendliness, I think it's, it's worth just mentioning that like, in this particular issue, um, we might want to devote some thought to like, there are potentially businesses or individuals are making, you know, I mean, I guess sort of a commercial real estate thing as a business. There could be times where sometimes like what's business friendly for one class of business is not what's for business friendly for another class of business. So like, if you take a 15-year abandoned property, for instance, if that property, you know, were to, if you were to give some incentives, even if they were kind of tough incentives that, that caused that property to be to redeveloped, that could potentially be very good for the folks who redevelop it. It could be potentially very good for the new tenants. It might not be so good for the incumbent property owner. So there, there could, there might be just, I just wanted like, just throw that out there in general that like, there could be times where like everything we do, you know, as a city, there's winners and losers, but there might be winners and losers within the business community. To some of these things. And it's just something that I just, just sort of get that wheel spinning. Finally, I, and I don't need to get into a huge thing about it. Having seen that picture in Arlington, I am, I just want to put this out there, like I'm open-minded. I think it's, it's interesting. I am a, a pretty big skeptic of this public art thing. I just thought that looked dinky as hell. And I think it's like the opposite of what I want to see is a bunch of vacant places that someone just like, you know, pays someone to draw a big smiley face on the side of the building and then just keep it as a tax write-off for the next 15 years. Like I just, like, I, I'm not saying that there's no way around it. And we obviously have an incredible artist community here. So if anyone can pull it off, it's us. I just, as we're going into it, that is an, an element of this that I just want to say like, I'm, like, I, I'm going to have to be sold on, on, on that element of this.
Cool. I, I, I agree with that. Yeah. Owen.
Yeah, that picture is probably not the, the best, uh, shouldn't, shouldn't be the best example of, of what they, what they're trying to sell. But, but that does bring, bring me to think that ECA maybe would be someone to talk to in that regard too. Just to bring it, if we're going to talk about public art, ECA should probably be involved. I agree with Counselor Peak, like the one, the public art's a great idea until the first controversial piece or something gets displayed in a storefront. And then the storefront through no fault of their own is now blamed for this controversy. I'd be like, we have to really drill really deeply, I think, to Counselor Peak's point with the drill really deeply into what exactly we, we want to accomplish or how that's going to look. I, I like the idea on the surface, but I, I think he made some great points in that picture. Doesn't encourage me to embrace it wholeheartedly. So, so is, does ECA have like, I don't know, like a list of vetted artists who get to put the, I don't know. I've just had something we have to think about. I agree.
No, that is worth thinking of, yeah.
And I mean, even beyond that, like, again, we're, if we're talking about here, like the problem of like long-term blight, not like the, the economy's down, but there'll be something in here next year. Like if we're talking about the issue of long-term blight, like you could put the most gorgeous mural outside of the Hurry and Scurry building. Just the most, it just important, powerful, gorgeous, really makes you think image. It doesn't change the fact that you have a parcel right downtown that is not being used for anything. And that the city is collecting no value, like, or like that the city is, is assessing at this very, very low value, which means that every single other taxpayer in the city is paying a slightly higher share of the levy so that this property can just sit there and rot. Whether like whatever's happening on the outside, I just like, and again, I, I know that like, we, when we think about this, I do think that this is again, why I'm coming back to this, like short-term, long-term, these are kind of different things. Short-term, hey, I want to take six months to renovate this place, but I'll put some cool art from a local artist in the windows. That's awesome. I like that. But long-term, I, I don't.
Yeah. No, I would, I would have to agree with that. And I would also, so one of the, one thing just popped into my head that I thought I'd read somewhere at some point. That in lieu of art in the windows, um, you know, uh, landowners could make their space available for pop-up markets or, you know, pop-up things. Whether it would be like a, a musical performance or a pop-up, you know, Christmas market or a pop-up, you know, jewelry sale or, you know, things like that. I don't know. But I feel like there's probably a lot of things out there that if we thought creatively, we could, you know, potentially, that might work better than, you know, drawing some flowers on a window. But Owen, go ahead.
Uh, just really quickly and more of a, as a point of public record and not for the sake of, of, of discussion. I think both you will be happy to know, I just happened to see on the, um, planning board's agenda that there's actually a proposal for the, um, the Hurry and Scurry space. It looks like at least two residential units and there might be some, uh, commercial component. I'm not sure, but just wanted to let you know that, yeah, they might, something actually might be happening there.
That's impressive. That's.
I mean, that's great. I mean, I'm just using it. There's half a dozen other examples, but I think it's just a, uh, it's, it's such a shorthand right now for like in, in East Hampton, but.
Yeah.
Yes, but, uh, no, I'm faulted you for use it because it's, it's, it's kind of like, yes, it's, it's, it is the, the metaphor of, of lights, unfortunately.
Yeah. So, okay. I'm trying to think if there's any other pieces of this that we'd want to talk about right now. I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I, I think, you know, as we look at the, the difference between the long-term and the short-term, it almost feels like those pieces would have different, um, registration fees and, and a different kind of, a different process, you know? So I think that that's something that we probably want to like, look at as we kind of move into this is what, what is it that we could do? I mean, the, the, the big one for me is, is, you know, Moriarty, Moriarty, because that has been, you know, but it's such a prime piece of real estate. And as, and so I'm kind of using that in my mind as an example of what, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the situation is with. I don't know who owns it. I don't know why it's been sitting so vacant. But I do know it has a parking lot and it's in a prime spot. You know, so, and I bet you there probably be some people interested in, in, you know, getting into that place and, and, you know? And here's another thing. Do we address like raising buildings and putting in new development or like reusing buildings as part of this? Is that, um, you know, because, you know, as we look at those kind of like dilapidated buildings, it might make more financial sense to, in, in order to reuse that property to be able to put a new construction there. So I, I, you know, that might be something that we want to explore as we move into this a little bit deeper, but, you know, I, I, I feel okay about kind of like taking what we have so far and kind of making some tweaks and then coming back to it. I, and I hope I can, I hope I come back to it with you guys and I hope I come back to it with you guys. So, so anyway, um, yeah, any, any, any kind of final thoughts on this before we? Okay. All right. Well, hey, I appreciate you guys. Uh, I think this is a good start. I think that we have a lot to think about and this is not going to be a quick one. This, this one's going to take a little while. So let's buckle our seatbelts, get ready for the ride. Okay. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All right. See none. Counselor Peak?
Hi.
Counselor Zaret?
Yes.
All right. I vote yes too. So I'm going to end this share and I will see you guys on the flip side. Take care.
That fills this.